This is the National Cathedral thing, it's a good thing, me, I support it. I will every month give you the 100 bags of cement. But if you are not careful, I am telling you from today. And you know my name, my name is Ma Wu Omemua. I'm sorry, the Church of Pentecost. Any respect, mark my words and mark them well. Why not careful, you will lose that respect before you visit your creator. Me, me saw cement, fatso so. Me, I don't know, I didn't see, I didn't know. Not president, it's a joke. But if you know, me saw me cement 100 bags in the mubaku. For first picture now, the buyer, the brother. Me did what, woman, the doctor, professor, Pokuina. Archbishop Duncan Williams, he said, gone, ten, 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 jalabi, white, he did not know. And I feel, um, um, he, he, my name is Jai, and he did not know. At the day where my child is a mother.
Ghana cities. It is Dina Samwa the 300 million. And in Chihamilton, the 300 million. Doctors of Glorious Jesus, I'm the boy here, me and send to be at 10,000, 10,000, 300 million. Jackalolo me 300 billion. What you have here? Say, I'm pa, Mumra make country and say, Andy, that's the 300 million. And I say, oh, Captain. I said, now, who can I yes, I need here. Information now, who are no, yeah, correct. Make one of me to you many free. And I say, yeah, mommy, 5,000. Where a very simple calculation. And cry and say, can it, let's say. Muji 30,000 Ghana cities each. We have four. Dina Samwa, Dina Chihamilton, Doctors of Glorious Jesus, Jackalolo me. It is musicians are to you, um, Kekewo Kumasi launch, and I say, eh, 1.2 billion. And here Kumasi per. Now, Kumasi, so far, I'll preach here. Eh, me, parent chairman. Chairman Eric, cabinet, yeah, me, che. Get ready. T here is your car here. It was very short.
It's not an enemy itself, but a means to an end. It was better for the transformation of society. Otherwise, it is not relevant.
Eh, yeah, T here is here, eh, yeah, the Academy more. I say, I did not, yes, you know, eh, for the transformation of society. That's a, anti me, man, but transform me society, dear. Eh, useless. Patrick, what we have? T here no.
The church is not an enemy itself, but a means to an end. It was better for the transformation of society. Otherwise.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, onokasa, yeah, yeah, no. His Excellency, the President, now watch this, that day. President, eh, cabinet meeting, do, or you late? It is one more to you, um, sa. I will ban to my church, I'll paint a course, and I think, 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 Kakaka. It is, oh, yeah, late, you know. Of course, I know, catch on, say, oh, when you give to what belong to Caesar and the deben, deben, the Sis, and the farmers Kaiser. Then they, yeah, Kumpon, yeah, no, yeah, Famanu, T here, Nana do into Kumasi launch.
But today is Cabinet Day. And I had to complete the work before I could leave. I believe God, the heavenly pleasure, will appreciate Christ's own statement. That you have to give to Caesar, and what is Caesar, and to God, what is God's. So please forgive me.
It's not President, I elect. It's a quote, Bible. Now, so far, I'm, I'm, say, Papa, why you late, ah, why you late? Wouldn't be in fact, Bible, I'm cut out, I'll let this as well. Okay, Sambe, that will be put on onia online dot com. You go there, you read, and you get the full video. Yeah, we, Kumasi launch, you know. Anna, a bai fa, nipamaku, makku, or a hundred. Every Ghana, echo USA, say, yeah, call launching National Cathedral, does it make sense? Eh, but so far, T here. I support the National Cathedral, but there are certain things, it doesn't make sense to me. I want the Board of Trustees to come out and explain certain things to us. Otherwise, you are as corrupt as the politician. Fine, nipah, do play in free Ghana. So, who can launch in National Cathedral, eh, who America? One more, who I, you know, Sonibadu, and a to you, T here, you know, Sonibadu, and a quarter, you know. And you know, two, yeah, then, ru, 5 minutes, you say, eh, 50,000 dollars, T here.
For.
Only. You are trying, yeah, me, you know, President, T here, that can, I'm sitting, come on.
With me all over. I'm ready. I'm there. Help us to stand and call for freedom.
What's I, any first, what I mean, come, I said. And you were, eh, a blind, say, two, yeah, you see, or charge it. That's why you were, yeah, that's a bad dress, and one, eh, Pia Kubi. Bet me, eh, do it in a cavi. Ah, Paris, Sonibadu. If it is true, just come and tell us that. Yes, 50,000 dollars. So, about to you, um, 5 minutes. Now, you're here, yeah, Samma Hotel, Mwada. They are more, yeah, near, come home, more. And I say, oh, Captain, dabby, 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 in Patrow. I did, I know, man, G, 50,000 dollars. Me, and I, me, fine, me, plenty, free UK, call US, quarter, you many free. And probably, because, would you say, 50,000 dollars, no, did we call here, tattoo? Sorry, yeah, can. Guess where, yeah, free cash, sorry, no, grow folk, eh. We, yeah, yeah, no, now, did we call here, tattoo? So, come out and tell us. Now, watch this. At the launch, eh, who, USA. A honor, Anna, so, Peni Duncan Williams. Actually, eh, the genesis of this whole thing. How the President conceived the idea of a National Cathedral. When the Finance Minister went to him, when, um, 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 he began praying for the then candidate in 2008, when he lost, when Nana Do lost the 2012 elections, and how he won the 2016 elections. Duncan Williams at Washington DC, listen to him.
Couple of people have asked me several times, and they've said, Papa, why are you involving yourself in this National Cathedral? You have so many things to do, you have your prayer mountain to build. So, I did this. And some have said, are you now MPP? Because MPP thought I was NDC. And now others think I'm MTP, of which I'm not. I'm CPP. But my party never wins. I don't know when they win. That's my father's party anyway, but my party is the kingdom. I'll tell you a story, um. Nana Poku Foriata is here, we've been friends, we go back, he's married to one of my sister, our daughters. Many of you don't know her. And then, Ken Foriata has also been a friend for many years, and we've met several times, and they've come to me and said, Papa, you have to pray for our brother. He's a good man, he has a vision for this country, he has to win the election, so. Uh, 2008, they spend a lot of time with me, I prayed with them, I prayed with the President then. And he didn't win. Then, 2012, we talked, and fellow, I kept coming to me several times, and Fred said, Papa, I'm telling you, this man is a good man, he has a vision for this country, you got to put your weight behind him, you have to pray, you win. And so many others, and I said, listen, after 2012, he's going to need a divine intervention. He needs to provoke the judicial hand of God to override some things. Now, I didn't tell them what he needed to do. I just told them what I felt and inspired by the Spirit to tell them. That it wasn't long when Nana Poku said to me, I think he's gonna make it. And I said, why? And he said, uh, he's made a vow.
All right. So, he's made a vow. I have rested my stick. He made a vow. Vow, ni, na, and say. All these pieces of videos will be put on onia online, so you can follow everything as it is. Listen, why, say, yeah, me, boss, eh, Obesi National Cathedral. Where eh, United States of America, Washington DC, launch. Onokasari, yeah, yeah, per, His Excellency, the President of the Republic, Nana Do, Dan, Kaku, Fado, T here is your car, eh, eh, who USA.
Because when I have the cathedral, I want to offer three reasons. Firstly, since gaining our freedom and independence from the British colonial power 62 years ago in 1957, Ghana has been spared civil war, famine, and epidemics. Was certainly no better than the other nations in our neighborhood, who have been confronted with these challenges. But I believe it is by the grace of God that we're being preserved and sustained. And the construction of the cathedral will be an act of thanksgiving to the Almighty, who has blessed us.
Okay, thank you. Why, who says, eh, eh, President, and who has started, Dan, Dan, eh, Ba? First, no, oh, see, oh, no, no, why, say, yeah, me, Bo. I feel, yeah, yeah, share Ghana, say, you know, civil war, famine. In 1983, come, yeah, me, na, de, bye. Yeah, me, na, cancer, come on, the, yeah, yeah, sa. It is, to, quite, eh, Sis, eh, na, yeah, me, na, cancer, no, to, yeah. It is, SS, eh, look. There's a video of the President. And a flag, one, and him, say. Before, a Washington DC launch, watch that video too.
A year ago, on 6th March, 2017, the 60th year of our independence. I cut the soul for the construction of a National Cathedral on my way to the Independence Square celebration.
Eh, yeah. On my way to the Independence Celebration. And a USA, you see, on our way. Hey, you see, what we have, what we have? What we have?
Celebration, 60th year of our independence. I cut the soul for the construction of a National Cathedral on my way to the Independence Square.
Eh, yeah. Says, eh, yeah, when we, Captain, so, do, yeah, yeah, now, on our way to the Independence Celebration. Now, watch this. Prime, now, President, he can't say, I'm, where, yeah, you know, I did, eh, T, yeah, the question, yeah, da. That be, uh, Independence Day, the name was not a Saturday. Oh, we, yeah, yeah, in the question, yeah, da, no, Anna, so, Peni, oh, who should, eh, pa? Eh, Shen, come, catch, eh, yes, eh, yeah, Kupon, I catch, eh, the, say. Now. Name, oh, I'm, Nana Do, say, oh, sing, Kite. Eh, Shen, Houding. Eh, see, eh, yet, in, 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 say, Obesi Cathedral, now, yeah, Kupon, the, Nana Do, um, quan. Ah, touchy, National Cathedral. It is, and, and, yeah, Nadi, so, basic Cathedral, yeah. Nipab, yeah, yeah, sa, as, so, about, to me, yeah, Kum, Nana Do. What it means is that, Nana Do, oh, Wuda, T here, who should, eh, pa?
The cathedral for the Lord. It will be next to impossible that somebody will take his life.
Oh, yeah, Kupon, I'm connecting, I'm pending, quan. I will link it, eh, the American Cathedral.
Now, God has linked the life of the President to the construction of now, when he determined, no one, Papa, and if we, if we, that's not.
No, but, eh, eh, say, I'm sorry, da, no, say, me, eh, T, the only thing, so, be, and I will wait, yeah, fast, eh, and suddenly.
Eh, bay, eh, T, so, be, bet me, eh, cool, oh, and I say, oh, me, pa, I'll be saying, yeah, Kupon, say, the, oh, National Cathedral, and, and, come, Shafar, Robeba. I'm telling you, I'm being honest. Come, Shen, Adane, now. Yeah, what? It, wow, me, do, like, eh, feel, eh, go, eh, no, I'll be saying, eh, National Cathedral, I see, eh, Church of Satan, listen to him.
National Cathedral. National Cathedral.
Oh, yeah, 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 Cathedral.
Yeah, yeah.
Church of Satan.
Eh, yeah, no, no, I'm, any, so, who's you? Oh, see, who, 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 see, who, see, National Cathedral.
Who's, National Cathedral. My, I tell you, yeah, Kupon, I say, eh, Church of Satan, yeah, yeah, Kupon, I say, eh, Church of Satan.
Eh, yeah, eh, eh, for, eh, the, Kua, question.
Oh, see.
Eh, for, eh, the, Kua, question.
You're, eh, senior, Kode, yeah, yeah, Kusuma, yeah. So, I'm, I'm, so, I'm, I'm, so, I'm, I'm, eh, huh. No, I'm, I'm, people, my, eh, say, eh, oh, ha, my, eh, come, I say.
Okay.
Eh, yeah, National Cathedral.
Yeah, yeah.
Eh, Church of Satan. Eh, no, my, this, eh. What you say?
Say, eh, Ghana, I'm sure, nah, which, eh, say, eh, yeah.
Church of America. Eh, of America.
Uh-huh.
Oh.
It's, eh, Sis, eh, nah, eh, Sis, eh, nah, Obun, something, eh, see, National, eh, who.
Eh, yeah.
Yeah, me, see.
Eh, yeah, thank you. It is, open, eh, see, eh, Church of Satan, I know, they, me, 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 on, eh, can. I feel, Qua, Kubron, Sam, Sam, Qua, Kubron, Sam, Subo. Qua, Kusari, eh, oh, see, eh, Nana Do, I, Kode, eh, do. Now, Qua, me, Kuma, eh, do. Eh, see, Qua, me, Kuma, eh, do, eh, Nana Do, Suba, eh, oh, no, Suba, eh, do, T here, eh, Qua, Kubron, Sam, can.